...
Buenas dias, todos bienvenidos a la audiencia del Consejo Municipal de Los Angeles. El Consejo Municipal de los Angeles, 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 el Consejo Municipal[393.14][393.14][S01, quiero reconocer al gran maestro y fundador de la Fundación Cultural y deporte. Muchos de ustedes que no saben, creo que muchos de ustedes sí saben, la Fundación cultural y deporte fue fundada para fomentar paz, entendimiento cultural, especialmente en las comunidades diversas, las culturas diversas, razas y grupos étnicos en el área de Los Angeles. La Fundación Cultural y deporte es un gran contribuyente a la celebración del día de Martin Luther King. Todos ustedes que salieron ayer, o los miraron por televisión, muchos de nuestros invitados aquí, fue el año más grande, el mejor paro que hemos tenido en las calles, y los que estaban en las calles, estuvieron emocionados de celebrar la legación de Dr. King. Con el maestro Chiang, una delegación de Asia, específicamente de Corea y Japón, que han venido aquí como parte del intercambio cultural, la amistad. La razón principal para su visita fue de presentarse en el desfile de ayer, pero también planean viajar a Sacramento mañana, y ser honrados por nuestro propio Consejo Municipal de la ciudad de Los Ángeles esta tarde. Estuvimos recientemente en la Junta Directiva de Supervisors, poco estuvieron ahí, con los concejales García y Alcalde, y tuvimos, lo que yo creo fue, una visita bastante importante, y en particular desde el 11 de septiembre, estamos de acuerdo que la diplomacia de ciudadanías, viajar donde podemos vernos cara a cara con sus hermanas y hermanos en todo el mundo, es importante, y no podemos ignorar los resultados de una trip like that. Me sentí muy bienvenida en Corea y en Japón, tuvimos una gran hospitalidad de ambos países. Les damos la bienvenida aquí, a esta gran ciudad, queremos las gracias a todos por su visita. Ahora quiero reconocer al maestro Chiang y su Fundación Cultural y deporte, con un certificado. Quiero presentarles ese certificado, de parte de la ciudad de Los Angeles, que les damos la bienvenida en su participación, en el desfile número 23, de Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., y en nombre de nuestra ciudad, le deseamos lo mejor y queremos las gracias por lo que ha hecho usted, las relaciones, los lazos entre su país, nuestro país en particular, para los jóvenes. Ahora me gustaría presentar a Young Jun Kim, el secretario general de la Fundación Mundial de Corea. Muchas gracias, esto es para celebrar su visita a Los Angeles. Ahora quiero presentar al alcalde Moon Young Kwon, él es el alcalde de...
Kang Nam Goo.
Kang Nam Goo. Muchas gracias. Nos alegra mucho que estéis aquí, y realmente apreciamos que tomáis tiempo y visitéis Los Angeles, y os agradezco mucho por el trozo de azul que os he presentado, y que os ha gustado diez años de buena suerte, no uno, sino diez años, muchas gracias. También quiero invitar al pastor Paul Lee, el director principal de la Fundación Mundial Cultural de Japón, pase por favor, bienvenido a la ciudad, muchas gracias por lo que hace, y le deseamos lo mejor. Ahora me gustaría darle la bienvenida al jefe de Changchang University en Corea. El director, el jefe de Changchang, la universidad de Changchang en Corea, muchas gracias. Apreciamos su visita, le damos la bienvenida y le deseamos lo mejor en todos sus metas y sus logros. Ahora me gustaría invitar al maestro Chiang, que diga las cuantas palabras, nuevo de parte de un Los Angeles muy agradecido, los jóvenes que ustedes han influenciado en los años a través de deportes y su fundación cultural, apreciamos los miles y miles de niños que no han cometido delitos y que no se han involucrado en pandillas, por esto le debemos a usted bastante, estamos sumamente agradecidos, gracias.
President, el jefe, Consejo Municipal, y me gustaría decirle gracias, este es mi honor, esta Fundación Cultural y Deportiva Mundial, al cual represento como presidente, he trabajado con esta fundación por 20 años, con la comunidad afroamericana, la comunidad coreana americana, que no reconocen el problema que ha ocurrido, y también con la comunidad de Los Angeles, la comunidad coreana americana. Lo que me pide la comunidad, yo siempre lo he tratado de lograr, pero no planeo... Muchos que han recibido medallas de oro, otros personas fundaron esta fundación después de los disturbios de Los Angeles, en los 90s, en los siguientes diez años, lo que yo he decidido, lo que yo me di cuenta es lo que tiene que pasar a los niños, los niños tienen que entenderse, tienen que entenderse mutuamente cómo vivir y compartir juntos cómo vivir en sus comunidades, también profesionalmente, si ellos crecen y no entienden otras comunidades y otras culturas, es donde resulta falta de comunicación, de ignorancia cultural, y esto justamente se usa para juzgar colores de la piel de otras personas, por lo tanto, lo que trato yo de hacer, yo estaba aprendiendo yo mismo en Sur Los Angeles, muchas preparatorias, muchos departamentos algo así, y el departamento de policía de Los Angeles trato de organizar un centro para los jóvenes, entregué todos los uniformes por los últimos nueve años, para más de 3,800 niños, y muchos pandilleros también, también trato de invitar a muchos líderes, estudiantes de escuelas universitarias, hasta ahora 2,600 personas, jóvenes y adultos, y muchas otras delegaciones también han visitado Corea, yo tengo mis sueños, mis sueños de ir junto con nuestra concejala Janice Hahn. Quiero decirles que Janice Hahn, concejala, lo que hizo antes de llegar a ser concejala, hace más de diez años, 10 minutos 88, las Olimpiadas de Seoul, miró la televisión, que viene una demostración de taekwondo, me invitaron ahí el día 27, ella estaba como voluntaria, preparó... En South Central como podemos compartir comida y demostraciones, tenemos muchísimas historias, juntos experiencia. Gracias, el día de hoy especialmente, un gran aplauso para la concejala Janice Hahn, por favor. Y luego también, me gustaría saber que los medios, muchos medios, no entienden la relación entre afroamericano, coreano y americano, así que los llevé a Corea, Corea americana es cultural, no van a decir, nadie va a decir hola, bien, como los estadounidenses, pero en realidad, en su corazón, se saludan, y entienden, y la relación, realmente quieren , pero no saben cómo mostrarlo, y los afroamericanos, cuando caminan, dicen hola, como están. La cultura coreana es completamente diferente, por lo tanto, yo tengo que, me he cargado de que estas comunidades se entiendan, y hemos invitado más de 3,000 estudiantes, una delegación para que vengan para conocérse, vamos a Sur Central juntos, en el desfile de Martin Luther King, que unos 10 años hemos participado, una experiencia lindísima, y me gustaría decir, dar las gracias a todos por esto, la personalidad más, del alcalde de Seoul, Kang Nam, y a todos. El alcalde Kang Nam tiene una presentación especial también, muchas gracias.
Antes de irse, ¿Miss Perry, do you wish to add to, or Mr. LeBange?
Miss Han, en nombre del consejalo, queremos felicitarle, gracias por traer esa persona porque hace lo correcto. Me siento que todos ustedes estuvieron incluidos en este desfile porque hace que las personas se sientan unidas, pero Janice me dijo que en 1988, ella me dijo que... No, nombraron el río de Han en Seoul, Corea, el río pasa lindísimo por toda la ciudad de Seoul, pero Nam Sung, la montaña linda, grande, y aquí tenemos la montaña Halway, todos suben a esa montaña. Así que, come on, Jingu, gracias por su liderazgo.
Buenas dias, damas y caballeros. Este es mi querido, grande honor estar aquí el día de hoy. Me gustaría mencionar mi más sincera gratitud a la concejala Janice Hahn, por darme esta oportunidad de estar presente aquí con ustedes el día de hoy. Yo participe en el desfile de Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. ayer, con el equipo de demostración de Kang, Kang. Pónganse de pie. Nunca he visto tal desfile, tal desfile muy excelente, muy lindo, realmente es un año muy especial para el pueblo coreano. Este año señala, este año, años desde que mis colegas coreanos empezaron a migrar a este gran país, nuestros grandes patriotas, Anchang Ho, empezaron el movimiento independiente aquí en Estados Unidos, se inició aquí en California hace diez años. Distinguidos, tengo un mensaje bastante especial el día de hoy. En nombre de la mayoría silenciosa, que posee el 97% de todos los coreanos, nos agradece a 37,000 miembros de la tropilla estadounidense. También nunca olvidaremos lo que este gran país hizo para nosotros durante la guerra coreana hace 50 años. También nunca olvidaremos su devoción, nunca, nunca olvidaremos. En ese entonces yo solo tenía siete años de edad, pero recuerdo yo esto claramente que el ejército militar americano usaron los zapatos. En nombre de 70 millones de coreanos, les diamos las gracias muy especialmente a todos ellos. Hay que considerar lo que significa la presencia del equipo militar en Corea, la devoción de este equipo militar en Corea, los allá de mi sencillo poder para explicarles, cada coreano sabe esto. El significado de la devoción de su hijo y hija en Corea es dedicarle a Martin Luther King, la creencia muy creída, y también a todos los seres humanos, que somos, que somos iguales, esto es prueba propia de que todos los hombres están creados e igualmente, que Dios bendiga a Los Angeles, al Consejo Municipal, que Dios bendiga a los coreanos, muchas gracias.
Es un gran honor tenerlos aquí el día de hoy. El alcalde, eran unas palabras perfectas, que si continuamos a honrar la legación de Dr. Martin Luther King, no debemos olvidar que él era un hombre de paz, y no podemos olvidar, en estos tiempos que estamos a punto de quizás una guerra, y esperamos, que se recuerde las palabras de President Carter cuando aceptó el premio Nobel de la Paz, nunca olvidemos que guerra, mientras sea un diablo necesario, aún es un demonio, oramos y esperamos poder llegar a una resolución en todo el mundo, pero particularmente en Corea, que sea que no haya violencia, que sea paz, esperamos, estamos con ustedes y esperamos que esta esperanza llegue, gracias.
Gracias, señora Han. Madam Clerk, por favor, comience su trabajo.
Aprobación de la hora.
Mr. Reyes, move, and Ms. LeBange, second.
Resoluciones comendatorias para la aprobación.
Ms. Perry, move, and Mr. LeBange, second.
En la agenda, señor presidente, los temas 1, 2, y 3 son temas notificados para la audiencia, hay audiencias de publicidad en la calle, y el consejo debería abrir la audiencia y continuar la audiencia y ordenanza hasta el 11 de febrero.
La audiencia pública está abierta, para temas 1, 2, y 3, sin solicitudes de los miembros del público para dirigir el consejo a estos temas. Continuaremos con estos temas el día de hoy.
Los temas siguientes son temas a los que la audiencia ha presentado, temas 4 a 16, el tema 16 tiene dos reportes en el archivo.
Los miembros de temas 4 a 16, ahora, antes de que la audiencia haya presentado, una moción del piso requerirá la reabertura de la audiencia, sin moción tal, los miembros deseando llamar a los especiales.
Algunos de estos temas son especiales, 4 a 16. ¿Hay alguna moción sobre el asunto 16?
Sin moción. Madam Clerk, llama el tema 16 especial, y desea abrir el rol, temas 4 a 15. Por favor, cierre el rol, y tabule el voto.
Diez, sí.
Señalados, los temas previos, siendo ordenados, se mantendrá para la lectura.
Temas a los que la audiencia no ha presentado, temas 17 a 32.
Tengo cartas de temas 19 y 24, las llamaré especial, en el banco de los temas, no haré solicitudes de los miembros del público para dirigir el consejo, nos encantará la audiencia pública.
¿Alguna moción sobre temas 17 a 32?
Sin moción, madam Clerk, por favor, abre el rol, por favor, cierre el rol, y tabule el voto.
Diez, sí.
Los temas son aprobados.
Procedamos. Volviendo a los temas llamados especiales, el tema 16 fue llamado especial en cuanto hay dos reportes en el archivo, y una moción requerida.
Los miembros, tenemos el tema 16, necesitamos una moción, tenemos un reporte del comité de presupuesto y finanzas, y también tenemos un reporte del comité de la calidad ambiental y gestión de residuos, el comité de la calidad ambiental también está ausente hoy. Madam Clerk, este tema no es urgente en naturaleza.
Si es urgente, creo que es urgente, pero ambos reportes, hay una recomendación adicional al reporte del comité financiero, de lo contrario, los reportes del comité pueden concurrir.
Vamos a ver, un sumario de los temas por el personal, por favor.
Mi nombre es John Henshaw, estoy en la oficina del consejo municipal. Este tema es la solicitud de autoridad para reemplazar a una banca que proporciona una línea de servicios de crédito para el programa de papel comercial de la ciudad, el tema es urgente, como la banca actual que proporciona estos servicios, uno de los dos bancos que proporciona estos servicios ha sido recientemente downgradeado por las agencias de calificación de crédito, y por lo tanto, cuesta a la ciudad dinero significativo y gastos de interés cada vez que se realiza un comercio de papel comercial.
Gracias, y desea resumir las diferencias en los dos reportes comités.
La diferencia principal es que en revisar los documentos, había un conflicto, un potencial conflicto de intereses entre uno de los abogados con los que nos ocupamos, uno de ellos es el consejo para la banca, y también es nuestro consejo especial de impuestos, sus roles son significativamente diferentes, se agregan dos oficinas diferentes, pero el abogado de la ciudad sentía que necesitábamos una ordenanza del consejo municipal por un potencial conflicto. Esto es una empresa que hemos tratado en el programa de agua de la ciudad durante años, el abogado que representaba a la banca acaba de mudarse a esa empresa legal, así que sentimos que no hay conflicto en absoluto, especialmente debido a que están en dos oficinas diferentes, y el consejo especial realmente no estaba tan involucrado en este negocio, pero debido a que hay un potencial conflicto, el abogado de la ciudad sentía que deberíamos ir hacia el consejo municipal y tener autoridad para firmar la ordenanza. Pero básicamente, entonces, los reportes son los mismos.
Bien, Mr. Weiss.
Aprobación de los reportes, señor presidente.
El otro tema que estoy feliz de informarles es que los fondos de activa de agua de la ciudad fueron recientemente upgradeados de un A+ a un AA-, eso es buena noticia para la ciudad, y estamos muy orgullosos del sistema de agua de la ciudad y de cómo bien se gestiona el sistema.
Bien, gracias, eso significa que uno de los reportes comités tiene la recomendación adicional, pero de lo contrario, no conflictan.
Correcto.
Así que, Mr. Weiss ha hecho la moción, ¿hay discusión adicional? Sin moción, madam Clerk, por favor, abre el rol, por favor, cierre el rol, y tabule el voto.
Diez, sí.
Está aprobado, por favor, siguiente tema.
Tema 19, llama especial en cuanto hay cartas del público.
Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association, fuimos muy de acuerdo con esto, pero quería agregar el comentario, hemos tenido un reporte del departamento de policía que la proximidad de centros de reciclaje y tiendas de licor es muy peligrosa y crea muchos problemas de policía, y creemos que tal vez la Policía puede tomar un look en esto y hacer algún tipo de ordenanza, así que tendremos una separación entre los centros de reciclaje y la fuente de daño.
Muchas gracias, esto cierra la comentario público para el tema 19, ¿los miembros desean escucharlo sobre este tema? Sin moción, madam Clerk, por favor, abre el rol, antes de cerrar el rol, Mr. Reyes.
Solo quería agradecer al señor presidente por reconocer, pues Mr. McQuiston saca un buen punto, muchos de nosotros tenemos centros de reciclaje que están dentro de la proximidad de tiendas de licor, y cuando miramos lo que eso crea en términos de medioambiente para nuestras comunidades, eso es algo que me gusta para nosotros evaluar y poner una moción en el futuro. That's something I'd like for us to assess and be putting a motion in the future to look at that language, to create that distance between...
...to create a distance between the recycling stores and the issue. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Madame Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, items five and six, if we can send them forthwith, please.
Item number twenty-four, call special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item twenty-four now before us. The council calls forward Mr. Mark Allen.
Mr. Mark Allen.
Yes, I wanted to make a comment. I don't know how many of you have been to the Bureau of Engineering in the past, which was in those two buildings on Spring Street. They're about the two most horrible buildings I've ever seen in the city. And I just want to say that there are so many empty buildings if we diversify a little bit. We could get 100,000 feet at the Galleria, it's called, the Metro. We get 100,000 feet at the Getty Building, next door to Universal. There's so many crowded things out, I just don't see why we should go into an old building downtown and start spending the money fixing it up. I just think you should all look at Spring Street before you go for it, because engineering moved out because it was so bad. They went over to Figaro Plaza.
Thank you. This closes public comment on this item. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, on this issue regarding the facilities, I've discussed it with Mr. Deaton, and I know that there's a need to do something with Parker Center, crumbling building. And this is going to be going to committees, I understand, and these are just two of the locations that we're looking at, and we're looking at other locations to accommodate while we decide what's going to happen with Parker Center or rebuild a relocation. But we're not fixed on this particular location. No, actually, we're looking at this and some other locations as a potential temporary relocation. And this morning, the Minnesota Facilities Committee forwarded to council a report on the new Parker Center. And the steps necessary to do that. So we're not quite completed with the review of temporary location, but we, your committee and the council will be receiving our report the next week on new Parker Center, and then we've got to figure out what we can or cannot do in the interim, and what's the most cost-effective solution in the short term. So we're only in the preliminary stage of this, and there's much more to go. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
President, thank you, Mr. Zine, for your questions. Mr. Deaton, could I ask for a friendly amendment here, that you also look at anything out the Metro Rail line in North Hollywood, at the end of the line, in the valley? There's a lot of office buildings, there's some A-class office buildings at Magnolia that potentially could house a division or two. And the reason why I say that, and I hope our thinking and all our general managers are listening, as we regionalize more the government, when we work off the 4.2 billion dollar subway system that is nearing capacity on some days, because people do ride that subway, we could have city facilities located near there. So I just ask for a friendly amendment, that you would look at the NoHo area of North Hollywood, have any office base for part, any part of what police administration is in Parker Center if they had to be located out there.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
There's a motion. We have a second, second.
Thank you.
Third by Wendy.
We'll consider that as a friendly amendment. Mr. Bernstein on the side.
Yeah, I think it does make sense. I can tell you that they're not going to be in a hurry to listen to our suggestions. They have their own agenda. For years, I urged them to open the new Valley precinct, the new division, at the Van Nuys Airport, where the Air National Guard was. They could have done it, they could have gone right in, but no, it wasn't what they wanted. Now, I think it's time that they need to start thinking about what we want and what the people want. And certainly, the Valley deserves to have a little better coverage and to have another station out there, or whatever facilities could be transferred out there. I know what they're trying to do with Spring Street, but we have our own agendas for the Valley as well as for downtown.
Mr. Zine.
Just saying, Mr. President, just for a second time and briefly, the issue of Parker Center's administration, but with the technology we have today, many of the functions performed in the 50s can now be done through the telecommunications system. And if we took some of the entities in Parker Center and put them in the valley or in the west part of the city, it doesn't have to go by the old tradition when Parker Center was established, and the city didn't have the population. We didn't have the technology we have today. So a lot of the entities in that building can be spread throughout the city. For example, RNI could be put in the valley. You don't have to have everything under the housing of Parker Center and the administration. So I know that we talk about a police facility, police division for patrol, detective operation, Parker Center focused on the administration, but within that complex, we have other entities, other disciplines in the police profession. So my focus on this committee, when it comes back, is that we explore the other areas of the city, and talk about other areas of the nation, and we need to explore to take and decentralize some of those operations, not only the police divisions having the radio calls and detective functions, but the administration, Chief Bratton and his staff. But then you've got all the others, you've got RNI, you've got the lab, you've got all these other entities that are there that can be spread throughout this region within the city. Term over the police reserves, no handle it. Thank you.
Mr. Briggs.
Thank you for those comments, Congressman Zine. We have a lot of police substations that are sprinkled around our communities. The notion was community-based policing, having a presence. Truth of it, though, because of our lack of personnel, the only time the officers are going there is when the police are running a report, they're going to take a break. But there is no real presence, although we have LAPD, we have the spot for them. In this mode of transition of building the facilities, we're capturing what technology has to offer, what technology has to offer, so that maybe these facilities might serve more than just a respite for the officer, but actually have functions there. Is that line of thinking happening? To enhance community-based policing?
I would have to look into that specifically. We're not, it doesn't make a part of it. Like us to look into substations, that would be fine. We have concentrated because of Prop Q and because of the problems with Parker Center, replacing the police stations and the jail and the emergency operations center and then the headquarters, but not below that level. But if you'd like Minnesota Facilities Committee to look into that, we would be happy to...
I would assume because of volunteers, you have the officers who perform officer duties, but they're volunteers as well, reserves.
Right.
You have these elements, and I'm not sure we're really factoring all these spaces. I know there's one in Colorado, we have one in Lincoln Heights. We've had them, but basically, they're not used.
Well, there's a... I don't think there's a standard approach to the substations, but we'd be happy to...
It's just be optimistic with the technology. Maybe there's something. Perhaps we can put an angle there that provides them a reason to be there more than just writing a report and taking a break.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Last thing, I forgot to mention, Mr. Deaton, when you look at all this thing, Piper Technical Center, which is the largest municipal building for services in the country, and all that parking is in the interior lot. If there was a structure built outside for parking, it'd convert all that interior parking to space, and maybe a potential to save the city money, as well as convert that to a larger facility to meet more of the needs of the department. In other areas, I just wanted to put that. I know you have a lot of this. You do a great job of balancing all this all the time. But I wanted to just throw that on, too. But really, the point I was making when I was talking about the valley is we have a subway system, you're 15 minutes downtown, you don't have to drive. You get called in to meet the police headquarters, and they could jump on that subway and be right downtown, and it energizes an area and it spreads it out, and this officer science and technology has improved since the years gone by, and we're able to do things so much faster with the technology. So please consider both those suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we have the matter as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. Senator Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, I rise not as a political person right now, but as a camellia judge. Last week, one of the finest collections of rare camellias in the world, which was in Los Angeles, has begun its destruction because one of the former councilmen persuaded the city council in a turncoat action to destroy it. And the International Camellia Society and the American Camellia Society is very disappointed in our city council. But I recognize the fact that when one councilman says in his district, this is what to do, we do have comedy in the city council. So I'm not particularly concerned about the present city council, but I do want to let you know that this has happened. It did not have to happen, and the world is disappointed.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Members, we have two requests for matters to be reconsidered today, one by Mr. Bernstein, one by Mr. Weiss.
Yeah, I would ask that we reconsider item number 30 for a technical amendment.
Well, let's take the vote on reconsideration first. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, item number 30 now before us.
On item number 30, on the second line after executed contract amendment or supplemental contract, that's what we want to add after the word "contract amendment" or supplemental contract. So I would so move.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we have Mr. Bernstein's motion to amend item 30. Please open the roll on the amending motion. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Let's open the roll on item 30 as amended. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourth with, please.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Let's send this matter forthwith. Mr. Weiss.
I've been asked by Mr. Fujioka, number four, as an ordinance, Mr. President, so we could reconsider it, so we could... We have 12 members present.
We do have 12 members present at this time. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration for item number four. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item number four now back before us. Any changes to item number four, Mr. Weiss? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number four. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote. That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, the council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Council member, Council President Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, January 22nd, to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Excuse granted.
Council member Holden requests to be excused on Friday, the 24th, for personal business, and a motion is required.
I'll move that. Mr. Holden is excused.
He clears the desk.
Members, are there any announcements today? Announcements? Adjourning motions? Do we have adjourning motions today? Members, please rise. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, members of the public, with great sadness today that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Morse Kite, who passed away this weekend. I think many of you will remember his presence here just a couple months ago, about a month and a half ago here in council, speaking about secession and speaking about keeping this city together. Morse Kite was a giant, not just in this city, but nationally, one of the founders, you could say, of a gay rights, gay liberation movement here in the United States. Somebody who set out not only to make sure that all human beings that live here in Los Angeles and in the country and in the world were afforded the same dignity as one another, but also somebody who sought to make sure that the history of the gay rights struggle and the struggle for gays and lesbians and transgender folks and bisexual people to have full dignity would be something that would be chronicled. And he helped USC found a library that really looked at all of the history of the struggle from New York to Los Angeles and everything in between. His personal collection of artifacts is something that is living testament to who he was and who he stood for. But Morse's, I think, creative strength was that he saw all struggles as a common struggle, whether it was connecting peace movement with gay and lesbian rights, or his strong voice for economic justice, and his voice that we heard just here to keep this city together. He was somebody who saw the way that people should interconnect, and you could find him at countless meetings in West Hollywood, was around the city nationally, bringing together people, introducing them. And I think that there are a few people in this world that are not only saints, and Morse was one of them, but who are also hoes, who act in all of our interests, to bring us together with the people that we need to meet, that we need to know in order for our work to have meaning and purpose in life. He said he was one of those people for me personally, and we will greatly, greatly miss him, but I think he was somebody that, whether we all knew him personally or not, did that for each and every one of us. He passed away in a hospice that he helped found after being fighting a number of illnesses over the last few years and different health conditions. He passed away in a hospice that he helped found for people originally who had AIDS and HIV, one of the first places that existed in the city. And I think it was fitting that he was there, surrounded by those who loved him. And thank you to everybody in Los Angeles for opening their hearts to him in these last few weeks of his life. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Galanter?
Thank you. I'd like to suggest that as the headquarters of the entertainment industry, it would be appropriate for us to adjourn in memory of Al Hirschfeld, who was probably the premier popularizer of, before videos, the premier popularizer of theater, especially legitimate theater. He did the most wonderful caricatures. He also made his daughter very famous. No one has ever seen her, I believe, but her name is Nina, and it appears in all the cartoons. There's a little number on the corner that tells you how many Ninas are in this picture. And for many of us, that was the first way we discovered, certainly for me, that was the first way I discovered theater, was trying to identify, find all the Ninas every Sunday in the New York Times. And since then, of course, his fame has gone far and wide. He was very well-liked and very popular, and the art world and the theater world are both much poorer for his passing. He was 99 and a half, I believe, slightly older than my mother.
The school.
I just want to add my comments to Mr. Garcetti's about Morse Kite. I met Morse when I started to work in Mayor Bradley's office, and he had, no matter how young or old he was, he had extraordinary energy. And we did see him, I think I've seen him at least four or five times in city council in the last nine months. He came in his wheelchair. He struggled to get up to the speaker, but he was there, and he was someone who fought for all people's rights and did start a number of AIDS programs in the city of Los Angeles, was a constant in our community, and someone that will be sorely missed. I received from Mickey Jackson many emails in the last couple of weeks about his status, what he was doing, and he was still fighting until the end. So he will be sorely missed from so many of us in Los Angeles because he enlightened us, he encouraged us, and was really, as you said, a saint in Los Angeles.
Thank you. I just too wanted to add my, and I hope that I can be on the resolution as well, just to say again, we lost a real angel, a real saint, as you said, in the city of Los Angeles with Morse passing away. The last time I was, had the opportunity to be with Morse was, I believe it was in November, after Trev Browdy in West Hollywood had been beaten up, and we had a rally that night to commemorate the unfortunate murder of Matthew Shepard, but also, four years later, but also to rally against hate crimes, which many of us felt had been the case with Trev Browdy. And we marched from the West Hollywood City Hall to another location. And we marched from the West Hollywood City Hall to another location, and Morris was in his wheelchair, but I had the opportunity to hold his hand while we all sang "We Shall Overcome." And he was a fighter and, you know, founded the Stonewall Democratic Club, just a great, great human being that I believe many people's lives had been improved and strengthened because of the courage of Morris. So we will really miss him.
Mr. Holden?
I can only say ditto to that. Morris Kite, I've met him many years ago, and I'm president of the California Democratic Council, along with a guy named Jim Foster. Jim Foster was the leader of the gay and lesbian rights statewide, and Morris was always there, giving support to the cause. And much of his progress has been gained in that, has been recognized for all people of the city and the state and the nation. It's a result of the efforts of persons like Morris Kite. Notwithstanding whatever they thought might happen, they make their point. And the guys like Foster did that. As you recall, in Miami, during the Democratic National Convention, when they tried to, in the effort to make the gay rights, lesbian rights part of the Democratic National Form... Morris supported Jim Foster to give a great speech on television, and it turns out that we thought the voice would carry it. But that's what happened, of course. He'll be missed, but he'll be remembered. For all the work he did in terms of causing us all to have a better understanding about all life, way of life for all people. I want to be a part of this.
All members. All members. Mr. Holden?
Yeah, I just wanted to send a beautiful message for Morris, and it was so fortunate that he came out here just recently to speak to us about Los Angeles and his love of this city and the love of the fight of this city. But the beauty of a man is what he has done to empower others to live a better life. And his activism certainly stood out there. And when I've met people in my days, whether a representative as now or as a representative's representative, I remember one time, there's a parade, he started the parade in West Hollywood, the Christopher Street West Parade, and it grew from a small number to now over half a million people plus, one of the largest parades in the country. And I remember meeting people who told me when they see city officials in the parade, it makes them feel good that people are embracing all people. And I think that was the beauty of what Morris was all about. I first met him when I worked for Peggy Stevenson 28 years ago or something like that. When was it, Pat? A long time ago. And I just think it's just important that we recognize someone special who means so much to other people, and I think we should look for some appropriate thing to name after Morris, because he truly was an outstanding Angelino who fought for people and embraced everybody and always kept the fight out. God bless Morris. Thank you.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Your city, your channel.